Okay, good morning. It's 9:00 AM. We have two work sessions. The first is one of those that are long and working and a lot of work over the many years, and we're making great progress. So, we're looking forward to seeing the jail remodel project update. So, Amber, if you'll go ahead and kick it off.
Absolutely. So, I'd like to invite up Bill with a partner from KMB, and here we have Greg and Terry online with KMB Architects and Director Shook to start us off. In the audience, we do have Michelle Schuster as our Director of General Services, has been part of integral in this part of our facilities project, and then Deputy Director Pelikowski and Barnett also to answer questions. So, I'm going to kick it off and get us started and hand it right over to Bill and team to start our presentation.
Good morning. My name is Bill Valdez. I'm a partner at KMB Architects, and we look forward to kind of giving you an update on where the project is at and the progress that we've been able to make with the team so far. Online, I believe, is Greg Cook, who's also a partner within KMB Architects and acts as one of our justice planners and designers. And we also have the project manager on our project, Terry, who will also be listening in and possibly making some additional comments. Next slide. So, our agenda that we wanted to be able to talk about is hitting on just some of the processes that we went through, which really started with developing our project vision goals, and through that process, we also had conversations about the project, the hopes and fears and concerns or opportunities that we thought that the vision of the project might be. We definitely want to talk a little bit about the stakeholder feedback and essentially all the different stakeholder groups that we've been involved with and being able to talk with and how their comments, as well as their open-minded approach to the project, has really helped to inform the project to this point and, I think, lead us to a successful programming process and now in the planning process. We'll also want to talk a little bit about what we've been able to observe with regard to the existing current condition and square footage and utilization of your existing facilities, as well as, as I indicated, we have completed programming and we'll talk through really about the anticipated current need as well as long-term growth that we're currently targeting as an outcome of the project. And then, we'll talk a little bit about some of the due diligence that we did. So, we actually took the team on some facilities tours, as well as presenting some virtual tours of other modern facilities that would be, there's relevant components within those and was able to get some great feedback from the user groups with regard to those different best-practice facilities that are online. Then we want, then we talk, want to present a little bit about different building concepts, which again align with those best practices for multiple different major components of the building, which is essentially kind of listed there. And then finally, we'll give you an update on where we're at with concept designs through and show you some of the site plans and some of the concepts that we're at right now with how that existing program will actually get deployed onto the site. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So, and then open it up for any questions that you might have. And again, as we're going through this slide presentation, sixteen slides, if you have any questions, feel free to please ask and would love to respond to those. So, next slide. When we went through the visioning process and goal, hopes and fears and establishing the goals of the project, we engaged the steering committee. We really asked them about really what their vision of the project would be, what their goals might be, and through that process, we had everybody be able to write statements or kind of hopes that they'd like to be able to have for the project on pieces of paper. We end up kind of pinning them up and over time, we kind of organized them into some of these larger themes that we end up noticing from the statements and the visions and goals that the steering committee had. And this is a list of really what those main themes actually were, starting with innovation. So, again, this is really forward-thinking, really looking to the future, planning for flexibility, which you'll actually see quite a bit, actually when we get further down in the presentation, and really wanting to rely on evidence-based practices. So, what are the best practices? What have we seen as being beneficial design solutions in other facilities that Clark County can apply to your facility? Successful re-entry, that's been a big part of this, is really trying to make sure that the programs, the treatment models, and the design of the facility is not limiting, a reduction of recidivism and making sure that people are not coming back to the facility when they end up leaving. Real focus on medical and mental health. This includes both a focus on a medical clinic as well as on medical and mental health, acute mental health housing as well. We also, as a baseline, want to make sure that we're talking about and approaching this from a budgetary standpoint and cost, obviously, but we want to make sure that we're also speaking with regard to realistic cost, you know, what these facilities actually are going to be, and then being able to make the most beneficial decisions based off of that. Also, looking at staffing, both from a safety standpoint, recruitment, attracting of talent, because again, in the end, that staff are really going to be a key driver to positive outcomes for anybody that is housed within your jail. We also want to make sure that we're looking through the lens of public support. How are we going to communicate out what the needs are, have, plan for an extensive amount of engagement with the community, be able to make sure that the messaging is framed, so actually everybody understands from the education and outreach what the project is all about and then the benefits to the community that will come from it. We also targeted timelines, so we want to make sure that we set realistic timelines for the implementation and phasing of the project and really be able to look at opportunities to be able to have early victories, which would essentially be, you know, opening up and bringing on some bed capacity and spaces as early as possible and be able to make sure that we also are not hindering the operational efficiency of the existing facility as part of the course of the remodel and expansion project. And then the last component of this, which is actually a really, really big one, your existing facility really limits the amount of strategic partners and service providers that can be coming into your facility and providing those services. The county has created a great network of these service providers, and they are all very interested in coming in and being able to provide services, but that's always been a fairly large hurdle and a limitation of the existing facility. So, wanting to make sure that we provide flexible spaces to allow those community service providers to be able to come in, which again, will help with better outcomes of folks that are within your facility. Next slide. So, what this actually kind of informed us as part of our, the stakeholder engagement as we went through programming and now into planning is really looking at the how. So, it's out-of-the-box thinking, really looking at what's best practices, drawing on these example facilities as well as not just going back to and always thinking of, well, this is how our existing facility operates, this is how we need to continue to operate, and really looking at ways to apply those best practices in. And this could be starting to look at direct supervision, indirect supervision, and hybrid supervision models, as well as multi-use and very flexible spaces. So, these could be used for video arraignment and video court, they could be used for clinical conversations, they could be used for visitation, and looking at a single space like that and how can it be used in as many ways as possible and really looking for those flexible opportunities, which will help to actually make the facility, the facility needs smaller, because we're using every part of the building as efficiently as possible. And then, a big part of this was also expanding engagement. So, not only on the operational side of things did we engage stakeholders, but we also reached out broader as part of that. So, that really expanded the stakeholders by engaging outside community agencies, including the city of Vancouver, the, you know, chief of agencies of law enforcement agencies, and was able to get their feedback about the concerns that the existing and limitations that the existing facility has and how a new facility or renovated renovation to the new facility can actually help them provide bearers service to their communities and to the county. We had conversations with Superior Court and District Court, as well as some of those outside agencies like Lifeline and C Mar. So, I think that really kind of informed, looking for as many viewpoints as possible to really kind of inform the decisions ultimately that we wanted to make and really understanding exactly what the needs are for both departments within the county as well as outside that are providing services within the jail. Next slide. So, what that all led to was really our evaluation of the existing facility and the programming outcomes of what the current needs are. Through current existing square footage, and this includes all the square footage out at the Jail Work Center, as well as here at the jail campus, is just over 160,000 square feet. So, the current program need is just under 290,000 square feet. And so, that would be really the current need needed if a facility was brought online right now. So, this includes bed need, but also these programmatic needs, as well as making spaces that are more appropriate from a size standpoint, providing the amount of office space and support space within the facility. So, as you can see, that current program need is really the larger step of square footage need versus the long-term programming and need, which is looking at 20, 20 years and beyond, is just over 360,000 square feet. And so, that step is a little bit smaller, so anticipating a smaller amount of need and growth to accommodate that 20-plus years of need. So, what does that mean and what does ultimately that give you with regard to the current program need as well as the long-term need? So, based off of that, big step is really with these different housing models that would be actually added. So, orientation housing would be adding 144 beds, that's male and female population, and would be in a varied quantity of singles, doubles, quads, eight-person, you know, mini-dorms to be able to accommodate that. Orientation housing is really focused on the first 72 hours that someone is within your facility. It's really focused on providing much more supervision, management, engagement to make sure that they, those individuals are getting the services that they need, because again, within your facility, most people are going to be there 72 hours or less. So, let's try to make that as a positive interaction with the county as possible. So, again, hopefully, we'll be able to kind of reduce that recidivism down the road.
Bill, can I add something to that real quick before you move on? So, when we heard from the courts and the public defense and all the other pieces in our community, when we talked about orientation housing, everybody right now goes to general population. So, we wanted to look at it, how can we triage at that orientation side without taking folks to general population, get them with their attorney, get them with family, get them with, get them seen by medical, mental health services? So, that is really a triage point, along with, we'll get into that further, but I just wanted to make sure, because there's some terms that we haven't talked about before that we learned through our stakeholder process, I just wanted to call that out, that orientation housing is a very important part to that.
So, let's further pause. So, this is all great.
Yep.
Lot of words per slide. I don't know how many more slides you have, but I want to clarify something on this one and just kind of telegraph what I'm really interested in is.
You bet.
You know, what are the nuts and bolts of moving forward? How do we sequence? You know, what are we building first? How do we move prisoners? Where do they temporarily stay? But on this slide, where we have a current program square footage of 289 roughly, 1,000 feet, what you have, all those bullets you have below, are all those capacities within that 289, or are you projecting out to the long-term square footage that you need?
There are, like, the orientation acute, mental health, and the medical housing beds, those are all in the 289,000. Again, that is really a current need. We're in the long-term, since this is really a specialized, these, those three in particular are specialized housing. We are not anticipating increasing that in the next 20 years beyond, so that's really that first step to be able to get. That going from the current program need to the long-term need is looking at adding additional general population housing beds.
Let me ask it in a different way. Is there anything in that list of bullets that's in the 365 versus the 289? Or are all of these capacities going to be what we're doing right now, phase one?
Yeah, they are all as part of, they would all be part of phase one. As, there is a little bit of difference, like Superior Court and District Court courtrooms, as listed here, would be as being a long-term need of four, there's a need of two that'd be needed, so that'd be a growth, and that's part of that growth difference between the current and the long-term.
Okay, so, some of this is long-term. I would ask for really getting some fidelity, because it's going to weigh in on our decisions on how we sequence each of these projects.
Exactly. So, here, Mevige, I would say that out of this whole list, the Sally Port, which we've talked about a lot, being a choke point, that's right. So, current programming square feet is to get us to standard, because we all know that the facility is not meeting current standards right now. So, 289 is to get us to standard. Out of this whole list and any conversation we've had, that top list of medical clinics, the mental health housing, the acute, which is some of the detox beds, there's some mental health piece with some of the detox areas that we don't currently have, excuse me. The only thing I see on this list is literally the courtrooms. And the reason why that we talked about the courtrooms as being a growth, the courts are not committed to what they need right now, and so, we need to look at that long-term of what the courts may need down the future. But really, what we're talking, and Bill mentioned this, with the flexibility, we're building, we want to build a space that's going to be flexible. What we saw in many of our tours in some of these jails that were built in the 90s and the 2000s, you have, you know, legal, you have mental health, you have rooms that were permitted for everybody. We need to be flexible on how we use this space, because things change, as we know, and we don't want to be married into a facility that can't be flexible.
Okay, so, one other question, just on the square footage issue and the growth. You know, at one point, we had an estimate, well, we need 1,000 bed space, you know, that was years ago. Maybe we will at some point. And the basic solution we all talked about over the years was modules, and we're going to have a modular system, kind of hub and spoke. We'll add modules as we need them. Is that what we're planning here as far as bed space, jail bed space, not mental health?
Yeah, essentially, there are, what is currently anticipated is that there could be incremental growth, especially on that general population need. The orientation, the specialized housing would be kind of an initial step to be able to accommodate your current need and increasing by minimally increasing your overall facility capacity. There's also some conversations that we've had, and we can talk a little bit more about it, is really adding another facility and some additional bed space out at the Jail Work Center, which would act as a relief valve to be able to very quickly bring on some additional bed capacity system. And then, that allows, you know, the renovation and any additions here on the site to be able to come online and.
Okay, so, just focusing on the main, what I'll call the main jail. Do we have a footprint expansion plan that we're starting to work?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, we will be able to add modules here.
We'll get there in this conversation. And we also have the Jail Work Center that we'll be talking about on one of our slides as our first initial step to, one, as Bill's saying, create that relief valve, to we don't want to ship folks out to other counties when we can do it locally. That will give us that relief. It will also plan long-term for different things like sentencing, transition housing, there's things that we can use that for in the future, but we already have that budgeted. We did that in the 2023 budget for the 14.5 million for the work center. That's already in planning. So, we're going to be moving forward with that first initial step. We talked about that in our last conversation, doing this in increments, these small wins moving forward, getting these things done, and that helps our overall footprint of how this is, this whole project will be done. So, we'll get to that in the, in the presentation.
Okay, super. So, before we move on, other questions by council up to this point?
I, do you have questions, but I prefer to just move on, because I think some of them may be answered eventually.
Any questions by other counselors before we move on? Hearing none, please proceed.
Again, you know, these bed spaces are really kind of the key drivers, and some additional information was requested that we provide with regard to, especially mental health within your facility. Those, the quantities of folks with acute mental health or some component of mental health or co-occurrence issues within your facility has increased drastically over the Purpose-built housing spaces to be able to provide those services for folks with acute mental health issues is really critical to better outcomes. Medical housing, really, you have very limited amount of medical service housing within your existing facility, so being able to provide a space to be able to do that in close proximity to a functioning clinic that is sized to be able to provide that level of service to the, you know, the entire facility is really key. We've talked a lot about centralized programs and decentralized programs, so that would be program spaces, meeting spaces, visitation spaces, recreational spaces, that if it's centralized, it'll all be in a central location, essentially moving and transporting all in-custodies to that location. Decentralized would be those are throughout the facility to limit the amount, those amount of movements, and really kind of looking at the best value that could come, could be a blend of both of those, so some centralized spaces for meeting rooms, program spaces and recreation, and some decentralized. So, really kind of using that as the best balance that we can do with regard to that. As Amber indicated, really, the vehicle Sally Port is a huge pinch point. Undersized, what we heard from the chief of agencies was that's really limiting the ability to really be able to get their officers back out onto the streets within their communities. And so, that space, to be able to make it appropriate, well-located, to make sure that that handoff from the arresting officer to the jail correctional staff as efficiently and safe as possible, to be able to get them out onto the street as quickly as possible is to the most benefit to the county as well as to the communities. As we indicated, being able to add some additional courtroom space to really help with safety and security and transport to those, especially for change of pleas within the court system, was a real need, and so, being able to add that into the program as, and again, that would be incrementally added. Initially needing about four courtrooms, long-term need is really, short-term need is two, long-term need is four. And then, through everything, really looking at improving operational efficiency, safety, security for not only the inmates, but the staff, as well as the community members and families that are coming to the facility and ensuring that that is provided. And then, as indicated before, really providing additional program space to where those outside agencies and service providers can actually come into your facility. As part of this process, as I indicated, we did facilities tours to kind of get some ideas. We went to Hillsboro, Oregon, and toured the Washington County facility. This was in early November. It was a facility built in 1998 and has a 572-bed capacity, and there's definitely some lessons learned that the steering committee was able to take from that tour. And then Greg Cook presented virtually two facilities that he was involved with the design of. One was Garland County Detention Center in Arkansas, which opened in 2015, which is a direct supervision model, which is essentially that the custody officers are in the housing units and directly interacting with the inmates. And it's a 480-bed facility that has planned growth to grow up to 800. And then Davidson County Downtown Detention Center, which is in Nashville, Tennessee, which opened just three years ago in 2020, which is a blended supervision model, so direct and indirect, so it can have an officer within the space, it can be managed remotely, and it's 762 beds, so a little bit, little bit larger and a little bit kind of closer to what you actually, your, your current needs are. So, those were some facilities that were presented and we're able to kind of present with finished photography and plans and a virtual tour that really allowed, I think, the stakeholder groups to really kind of see what a modern correctional facility is and can be and how it functions and the efficiency and safety and outcomes that can kind, that can come from that. So, I think that was a fairly valuable effort to kind of take those steps in early November to go through that. And then, what we wanted to be able to kind of talk to a little bit is some of these larger departmental components there within your facility and really based off the conversations and best practices, really what those spaces should be, what's the vision and goal of those spaces? And so, with this, I'll turn this over to Greg. Are you still on there?
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, good. So, Bill has actually covered a lot of this already on the previous slide, but as he mentioned, the vehicle Sally Port, but also the associated intake functions, that's a key area that we've been focused on to improve the operations and safety at the jail. When it comes to starting with the intake area, intake is really a space where you have three distinct functions and processes happening in the, in the same place. So, you have intake, which is law enforcement bringing people into the facility potentially to book them for a stay. You also have transfers where in-custody adults may be transferred to another facility or they may be taken to court. And then you have the release function, which is often someone will be brought in by law enforcement, and they will ultimately be released prior to being booked into jail or. or after being booked in the jail, they'll be released. But all these things happen in the same space. And as you can imagine, this is a high-pressure, high-stress area because you are bringing people in off the street and who may be unknown to you, who may be in a moment of crisis. So our focus here as architects and designers is first of all, to envision or create a space that has calming aspects to it. And we do that through the use of color and materials, natural light, things like that. But we also understand that Clark County wants to move to an open booking environment, which is something that we did see on our tours and I provided examples of it through the virtual tours. And that actually also helps support the development of a more calming environment. So when you have someone coming in off the street and they're, they're behaving pretty well, then they can sit in an open space, they can watch TV, things like that. And all these are strategies really to reduce stress and improve safety. For those who have been in the existing jail, you'll see that the, the space is very tight. So movement is really constrained. When you have these three separate flows that you want to keep separate, that becomes problematic. The, the visibility for staff is, is pretty poor. So we are looking to create a more open environment, which is something that, as Bill mentioned, through evidence-based practice, that's something that we've seen done successfully in, in other areas around the country. We also want to locate the intake booking and functions close to some other supportive services within the jail. So Bill's already talked about orientation housing. So for those that are coming in off the street who might be in a crisis, whether it's a mental health crisis or a substance abuse crisis, that's where they can go. It's going to be in close proximity to the staff here. So emergency response is something that'll, that'll be quick and effective. But also the development of an assessment center. So the staff at the jail can better understand who's coming in off the street and what sort of services they're going to be needing while they're in custody at the facility. The other component here is the vehicle Sallyport, which again, if you've been through the existing facility, you'll see that it's really undersized for the volume of traffic that they have. It, it doesn't accommodate larger emergency response vehicles and, and buses and things of that nature. So just a more efficient space for law enforcement to come and engage the facility, come into booking and quickly get back on the road, which is in the interest of public safety for, for all of Clark County. I think I covered the booking area unless there are questions specifically about this space?
Yeah, common question. So this is a picture of a booking area. I just, I've never seen a booking area look like that before. The, so, you know, I've seen circles that look like they came from Architectural Digest and talking to Public Works years ago, he said, yeah, but they're 10 times more expensive than a functional circle. So, you know, I want austere, functional, least cost, you know, not something.
Totally agree.
And impressive.
Yeah, if you look, those are, those are actually just glazed concrete blocks. So the selection of materials was really focused on durability, number one, and cost. And anytime we could add color to that, we did. The, what you see here is a centralized, centralized staff space in the heart of that open booking area. What you don't see is beyond, there are holding cells for those who aren't able to, to be out in, in the main space. So it's really a large, open area with good visibility. And in this case, the importance of bringing in natural light was really critical for the, for the client. So that's something that we want to provide. But I totally understand your comment. We want to be making sure that we make decisions that put the, the, the use of the taxpayers' dollars to, to its best use.
Great, before we move on to courts, I just want to make a quick comment to Chairman Edige. I think also too, when we look at this from the steering committee and the group that's on that, the, one of the main top drivers was budget, making sure we have durable surfaces that last decades, that facility is not in, you know, five, five years from now trying to fix. And what we saw in Washington County when we did that tour is a lot of their surfaces have lasted, it looks new still. And it's 1998 that that was built. And I think when we look at that from a design perspective, we're not looking at designing it for, you know, a magazine. We're looking at designing as how is this going to, one, service our, our community, two, make sure our corrections offices are safe and stable and they work 12-hour days and make sure they're in a really great environment to be able to thrive and durability in facilities. I think that is the main thing that we looked at from that point of view. So when you're looking at the steering committee's bullet points, that was a, a thread that we looked at lens when we, when we look at this facility. So I just wanted to add that in. Okay, Greg, I think we're ready for courts.
Yeah, I'll cover court slides.
Let's see, Bill.
You bet. So again, what we, what came out of the program of this is really the. A little bit of an echo. All right.
We need to make sure our mic is muted.
Is this better now? Okay. Because again, making sure that it's a calming environment and really something that aligns with dignity of the court. So again, everyone that's going to these facilities is, is behaving kind of as anticipated. Really the, the function here that we're looking at was really an efficiency with regard to change of pleas, which needs to be in person, the, the signature and, and fingerprinting and documentation associated with that has to be in person and be able to be filmed and documented. So making sure that that can be done and as efficient as possible. So we don't need, these are not going to be jury-capable courtrooms. So we don't need jury boxes, we don't need any jury deliberation spaces associated with that. Programming and planning for chambers is essentially just a robing room or some, essentially where a judge can come down here from their regular chambers and their, their regular courtrooms, be able to use the space and then be able to go back to their, their other courtrooms within the courthouse facility. Still planning to try to ensure the same three separate circulation systems for safety and security, which are public circulation, staff circulation, as well as in custody circulation and trying to plan around those to make sure that the only location where they cross is actually within the courtroom. And so needing to be able to accommodate that and then simplifying custody transport. So by having these within the facility and close proximity to the jail allows for very simple transport from within the jail, whether it's within the new orientation housing, which or within any of the new or general population housing that would come online in the future to be able to make sure that they can come here and utilize these courtrooms in the future. Also making sure that these facilities are ADA compliant for all the participants within it, whether it's the attorneys, whether it's judicial staff or any of the in custody or the public that are coming to these. Also planning for a fairly small gallery area where the public can come in. So these are not, you know, oversized or, or planned to be opulent in any, any stretch of the imagination. So just making sure that that efficiency for court functions and correctional functions are met. Then going into orientation housing, Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. So we talked a little bit about the orientation housing as it relates to the intake process. So our, our program identifies an assessment center where jail staff can get a better understanding of those who are coming in off the street and potentially getting booked into the jail. And orientation housing is going to be a key component of that. So this is where inmates will have a little, little bit closer observation from staff. This is where, for those who are requiring a detox, this is where that is going to happen. So there's going to be closer proximity to medical staff as well. The approach to this housing and the image is probably not descriptive of what we've actually envisioned for this project is a little bit more open, flexible housing where you'll have the opportunity to house inmates individually or in pairs. Or for those who are able, they can actually be in a more of a dormitory setting. And there, there would be a lot of engagement with staff in this space. As Bill mentioned, this is really focused on the first 72 hours of someone's stay at the jail. I've been involved in a lot of suicide prevention efforts around the country through the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. And I can tell you that this, this type of space is essential to a suicide prevention program that, that would, you would want to have in place at the jail. Because this is where you, you really get to understand who's coming in and what it is they're going to need. I will say that the image you see is actually a diversion unit. That's from the project in Nashville that Bill mentioned that I described, or that I worked on previously. So this is a slightly different program, but you can still see similar approach with bringing in some color, bringing in natural light, but also again, focused on durability. You see that the officer stationed there is just painted concrete block. But all of these ideas that we bring around sort of trauma-informed concepts or, you know, the idea of, of design being supportive of treatment, those all impact staff as well. So those who are working in the spaces, whether it's intake, which I mentioned was high-stress, even orientation housing because of the unpredictability of the population that you have, these are high-stress environments for staff. So from a design standpoint, we want to make sure that we do everything we can to support staff wellness, which was one of those goals that Bill talked about at the very beginning there. Any, any specific questions on orientation or detox housing?
It doesn't look like at this point you can go on to acute mental health.
Yeah, acute mental health. So it's a similar approach that we have with orientation housing. We're focused on improving communications and contact with staff. So when we're talking about mental health housing, we're not just talking about custody staff, but we're also talking about treatment staff, whether that's mental health professionals or nursing. So you'll see in the image there, again, it's a slightly different program, but we're starting to integrate those healthcare professionals into that housing environment. This is where we see a critical adjacency between intake, not so much because of the intake function, but the connection to the vehicle Sallyport. So if there's an emergency, we want to make sure that staff can get that inmate into the Sallyport and into an ambulance as quickly and safely as possible. There is a, a, a critical adjacency between mental health housing and, and the medical clinic and medical housing because we understand that for those who have mental health issues, there are often co-occurring disorders and chronic illnesses that will also need to be treated, treated while they're in custody. So that proximity, it improves efficiency, especially for your healthcare staff, which are often overtaxed in, in a jail environment. And with both the mental health housing and orientation housing, we're looking at single-level housing concepts. For, for those who have been in the existing jail, you'll see that the housing units on the upper floor have tiers, which function pretty well for a general population environment. But for acute mental health housing and even orientation, that can be a real challenge for staff who may have to go up those stairs to respond to an event. I think that probably covers it on mental health. Programs, the image isn't really descriptive of, I think, what we're trying to do, but Bill, Bill mentioned that we have a program that, that's been developed around providing centralized and decentralized programs. So centralized programs really are envisioned for, you know, low to, to medium custody inmates who are afforded the ability to move out of their units to, to go to treatment or, or programs. But we're also developing housing unit concepts that locate the programs directly at the unit. So this would be for your higher custody, custody levels and it would limit their movement through the facility. So they'll have the opportunity to do video visitation, even some court appearances, programs, whether that's, you know, substance abuse programs, anything. And also meet with professionals and healthcare professionals at the unit. So that, it, it's safer for the overall facility because you're, you're limiting the movement of your in custody population, but you're also providing a safer pathway for those providers to get to that population through the jail. And ultimately, the goal here is, you know, when someone, you have someone who's been booked into the jail, you want to start to connect them to services within the jail that then, once they're released, they can continue when they're outside. So the earlier that we can provide that connection in the jail, I think the better for the community and the better chances for that person to succeed once they're released.
Greg, can I add something further?
You sure can.
So there were some questions, Counselor Young, about our programs and the kinds of things that happen inside of our facility currently. And a lot of those things become restricted because of that movement, moving, whether it's the professionals to the inmates or the inmates to the professionals. Our limited space dictates how that happens and also our staffing. And so just some of the examples of the things you're doing, you've heard conversations about our MOUD grant or OTP and setting that up as one of the first jails takes a big space. But then once that space is done for that, instantly something's back in there. So just some of the examples that we're currently doing are some housing assessments and referrals, homeless outreach referrals, substance use disorder assessments, child support, peer support, employment readiness support services, provision for naloxone and others for release, right? So as inmates are leaving, they have the resources available for them, different hygiene packs. And then the jail transition coordinator is working with those different inmates. We actually have different lines of transition coordinators that would love to come into the facility if there was more space. And so there's lots of exterior resources that we just can't bring in yet. And so again, as we add more staff online, as we add more space and opportunity for space and kind of what you were talking about, Counselor Medgey, about more common space for different professionals to come in, whether it's that transition or programs or wherever, it's going to be important to have that flexibility that Greg and Bill have been talking about. And that's some of the things that we're currently doing. We have a whiteboard, lots of programs that we want to do to the future, we just can't get to yet because of our limitations. So I just wanted to add some of that context. I know there was a question on some of the things that we are currently doing and then as we move to the future of what we're growing.
Great. So then moving on to how these vision goals of these different spaces and the, and the program can actually be deployed on, on the site. So if you go to the next slide, that's where we really started looking at the, you know, site opportunities and site constraints that, from a planning standpoint. So again, this is a very urban site, so we need to be thoughtful about that. You know, bound by Harney and Grant Street and 13th and 11th Streets. So we had conversations about where really what available space for adding the additional square footage, where it would be. And so we are looking at both the north and the south parking lots along 13th and 11th. We also had additional conversations and the, the county facility staff has already started talking with Sea Vancouver and Vacation of Harding Street could be an opportunity as well to be able to allow for additional buildable area, whether that is short-term or long-term, as well as could be very beneficial for certain components like vehicle Sallyport flow as or, and/or with regard to how loading dock for, you know, food service, laundry and other supplies are arriving to the facility. So just kind of start to, to explain a little bit of how we're end up looking at this facility, knowing that we actually, you know, we do have a substantial amount of square footage to be added onto the site. So what's the most efficient way to be able to do that? We had some planning principles. Um, we had some planning principles, which is actually on the next page, which really said, okay, how would we really want to organize this, uh, really focusing on efficiency, uh, circulation of flow, um, as David indicated, really about uh, how are we going to be moving people through the facility, are we moving um, uh, staff and outside agency, uh, service providers through the facility, what's the best way to do that, or are we u- moving um, some of our lower custody uh, uh, inmates through the facility, what's the best way to be able to do that? As Greg indicated, there's a lot of uh, uh, adjacency relationships that we want to make sure uh, are able to be accommodated, um, with regard to the Sallyport, intake booking, medical, medical housing, um, and orientation housing as well, so um, wanting to make sure that those are really high priorities that are really looked at. Um, and then a lot of the organizational principles, which really start with uh, entries into the building, um, your current facility ends up having a, a bit of uh, convoluted entry uh, sequences into the building, uh, mixing in different populations of folks that are coming for uh, courts or visitation, or to um, see jail staff or, or sheriff staff, so trying to streamline that, uh, be able to have the folks that are coming in to the facility, um, and the folks that are being released f- from the facility on opposite sides uh, of the site, uh, to uh, kind of streamline that process, uh, really looking at expansion opportunities as well as limitations, and we had some good conversations with regard to that from an overall planning standpoint. Um, and then another component was H-Pod, um, really, can we reuse, can we utilize that, is that uh, best, that space better located uh, uh, to actually convert it into another use, um, whether that might be some of the programs, maybe it's some of the secured um, admin and office space, um, and uh, if, if so, where would those beds or those future component of beds be relocated to, so those were all some, some driving principles with regard to how the building could, could be organized. Um, so then the next two slides that we wanted to be able to show you were where we're at and what, what we've kind of looked at over the last month or so, um, with the steering committee, so this, this first concept was, again, expanding to the north as well as to the south, um, really, again, having the vehicle Sallyport, um, which is there in the red, and the intake and booking uh, area, which is the purple, um, on the, the first um, level, um, and, and in close proximity to medical, uh, medical clinic and medical housing, at the same level also as the acute mental health housing, and then stacking, stacking on that south side, that orientation housing, so it's still a, a direct uh, relationship right above uh, intake and booking and uh, near the vehicle Sallyport, which Greg indicated is really a critical link. Um, on the north side would be an expansion of more of the uh, public entry, so really the jail lobby as well as both the jail administration and office spaces, both for secured and non-secured, as well as stacking above that would be the uh, additional general population housing, um, and future growth, so this is just using the um, north and south parking uh, for this, um, really looking at uh, and, and actually putting in the courts uh, here in the uh, the level zero, so the lower level of the existing jail, um, and then uh, jail um, non-secured admin spaces also there on that lower level, um, seem to make the most sense. Uh, the graphic at the top right-hand corner is really looking at uh, really what the site would look like i- in a section, so essentially, if you had uh, you know, a cake and you cut it in half and then you look at it, you're able to kind of see all the different layers um, of that, that's essentially what we're looking at here, so you can see the multiple layers of the existing uh, jail, they're in gray with the housing, uh, and other um, uh, program spaces in the orange on either side of that, uh, both along Eleventh Street as well as on Thirteenth Street, um, so as you can see with the general population housing being tiered and being larger floor-to-floors, um, along Thirteenth Street would be a higher volume than anything along Eleventh Street uh, in this concept. Um, and then going on to the next uh, diagram, which was starting to say, okay, it, since Harney is a possible opportunity, what would that look like? And so uh, one of the concepts was looking at if the vehicle Sallyport was located in a portion of Harney, that gave, would also uh, allow for very efficient um, drive-through access and flow through the vehicle Sallyport, it would also allow for some additional square footage on the south side to be able to add um, those programming components there, which might be able to kind of lessen some of the heights or be able to provide some additional future um, uh, site, um, real estate, uh, either on, on the north side uh, for future growth, um, to accommodate whether that's that twenty-year growth or beyond twenty-year growth, so these were just some of the conceptual um, planning op- opportunities that we're looking at, uh, really the red, you know, Xs and lines in both of these is really looking at uh, in-custody movement, so essentially that would be where um, uh, on the, the, the jail housing floors, which would be like a level, levels two and levels three, uh, is really looking at, okay, how would we tie um, the existing jail facility into new housing, whether it's orientation housing on the south, general population housing on the north, how do we tie those together? Uh, so that would allow those populations to be able to use centralized programs that could be in the existing facility, um, and be able to invest uh, your dollars in um, the new housing, which can be actually designed um, uh, to really meet uh, modern uh, design standards. Uh, so those were some of the, the concepts that we've, we've utilized, we're coming, continuing to refine these, we have meetings tomorrow uh, with the steering committee um, to show uh, how these planning ideas could uh, be further uh, defined and refined uh, as we continue to move forward. So, getting to uh, your question from before with regard to how, how are we looking at applying uh, the programs, uh, both for the short-term need as well as long-term need, these are some of the planning diagrams that we've been looking at. Any questions on that at this point?
Apparently not.
I, I did want to add some context, there were some questions about the medical care and what kinds of services that are provided, um, one of the questions was, is, is our mental health uh, area, acute mental health area, a long-term, short-term, whatever, and that's really dictated by the courts, so we hold inmates as long as the courts direct us to, and so as those services are provided, the flexibility for our staff and locations have to really be um, capable of accepting anybody with mental health issues, right, and so, um, they're coming and going, depends on the courts, and again, in that seventy-two-hour um, window, flexibility to move them out to other locations that are maybe more appropriate for that. As far as the medical uh, facility and some of the services that they do provide, um, they're providing everything that you would see at a, a normal doctor's office, so some different things are just some mental health services are also being provided by our contractor WellPath, uh, lab services, sick call services, uh, on-point testing like flu and COVID, chronic care services, um, some of the, the basic sutures, stitches and drainage issues, things that you would normally go see a doctor about, uh, medicine, um, all day, I think we have two med passes where we're providing medication out throughout the day, x-rays for basic stuff like that, and so again, it would be normal services that you would find at any uh, sort of a medical facility, or the, the same services that we provide for inmates that are, that are being housed, so just uh, for some additional information there.
Thank you.
So I'll fill the silence here, I, I, you know, I've got far too many questions that I, I can address here today, uh, so I hope to arrange to get together maybe with your task force, and I know Michelle and Sue are on, on that team, um, but I did want to hit a couple of high points that I think uh, are valuable for the public as well, and especially in the area of mental health where you were just leaving off, because I think there's a, a opportunity here, uh, to partner with the state, uh, to, it may take some additional legislation, I don't think so, I think it takes some additional funding, uh, I think it takes some licensing approvals, um, I, you know, obviously I want not only best practices, I want to lead the way. And, and the one area of mental health, um, you mentioned, well, we keep them as long as the judge says, well, as we're all aware, a federal judge is finding Washington State every day. What a ridiculous situation, and so I, and I was in that situation as a judge, sometimes holding the sheriff in contempt in the jail, one, in one area, and that is mental health, so you have someone who can, cannot participate in their own defense because of their mental health condition, which is usually uh, because they need to be detoxed, and some, very quickly the forensic evaluation becomes, they're fine, they can participate once they've been detoxed, but in those cases where now it's more than detox, they're fluidly mental ill, and we don't have mental treatment within the jail, so now you have someone in the jail, in custody, receiving no mental health treatment, and their criminal case is in limbo, it's inhumane, because it's not for weeks, and that's where I, the judges get involved, uh, in finding the state in contempt or the individual um, entities in contempt, because it's weeks and months of sitting in custody without mental health treatment and without their cases progressing. That's something we can fix locally if we had, uh, if we become a licensed facility for forensic restorative services as part of our overarching detox, you know, addiction services and mental health treatment, it is something we need to focus on because it'll solve a statewide problem, this is an intersection where we already have people in custody, they've already allegedly committed crimes, and they're in the system, and they're not getting the care they need, they need, you know, we're not talking not guilty by reason of insanity issues, we're talking they can't even participate in the trial and it cannot move forward, so you know, where, you know, brought it up a number of times, my goal is to have a licensed treatment facility and include restorative services locally, so we don't have those issues here, so no one languishes, their case can proceed, and I'll mention too, I, I, in my experience, uh, and in talking to other judges as well, outpatient restorative treatment, out of custody restorative treatment almost always fails, because they're mentally ill and they have no capacity to even make an appointment, and uh, so while they're in custody, they need the treatment, they need the detox, where are we at? I know, I saw you had C-Mar on the list, assuming Columbia.
I will touch base on a couple areas, then Dave can uh, finish the rest, we have this in a presentation tomorrow to Law and Justice with what, where we're at with mental health um, providers in the jail, we do provide mental health services, but due to the facility and what we're limited to in part of our medical contract, that's where we provide, and then with our, also the service providers that we bring in, as Dave mentioned, in our current footprint, it is almost impossible to do all the things that we need to do with mental health housing, I'm just going to touch base on that, and with the acute mental health housing that Bill has mentioned his team has looked at in pre-concept, we could do those things that you're mentioning, Counselor Medvee, and I think to Dave's point, it's really hard to get folks in the facility and out of the facility, and also too, the person that's there, keeping them safe and housing and getting the services they need while their case is going on, so that all dovetails, I think, beautifully into what we currently can provide and what we do provide, how we're looking at expanding those in our current footprint, and then what we could do with that acute mental health side of the housing, um, in our, in a, in a new concept for the facility.
So, so what I'm hearing is, uh, we, we would never become licensed, we'd never be able to provide those services unless we expand our footprint, so, and on prior briefings that you've given us, both at Law and Justice and probably here from time to time, you know, our addiction and mental health population is huge.
Yes.
I mean, it's forty, sixty percent, depending on the daily uh, population, but, and so that should be among the very highest priorities as we sequence.
Yep.
These remodels.
And I think that that's what, the, what Bill talked about, that's the beginning, the Sallyport, the booking, the intake, which is a huge choke point for our Law and Justice partners as well as our staff, then the other piece is acute mental health, the orientation and detox, so those three top areas are what we're focusing on, and to your point about being a licensed facility, when we're talking about that in Law and Justice tomorrow, and that's in our presentation, there's really three paths that we can go as a county, and really what, um, both Spokane is an area as well as King County, the mental health um, staff is hired by the county, so one of, King County resides in public health, Spokane resides in the jail, so we have those options to talk through tomorrow with Law and Justice, but we are thinking about that as we're looking at the design of the facility.
Perfect, and I, I can't recall, we do record the Law and Justice, because we've been having great briefings there, I'm, okay, so I'd encourage all the counselors to listen as well as, okay, so I'll leave that area, um, the other issue that kind of caught me by surprise today strategically, you know, all, after all these years, and maybe I was just missing it, where, where did we start working arraignment courts into this, because, you know, over the years, you know, I know the muscle movement involved in having inmates brought back and forth to court, whether it's a trial, uh, all of the level of detail and security, it's huge, especially on arraignments, but typically, even, you know, so we morphed over the years, over the decades in large jurisdictions with high volumes to video, uh, you know, we got through um, those constitutional issues of communicating with their counsel and without other people hearing, and, but arraignment courts, I mean, especially with the flow that we have, you know, if we had an arraignment court, I mean, what's going to be used for one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, and then it remains blank the rest of the day, I mean, I'm just, where did that come into this planning?
It's been on the table years, but they're really around change of plea, it's the folks that have been in the jail a really long time, that's what the judges are focusing on now, I would say ten years ago, Judge, it was, I called you Judge, because it's ingrained in me, I would say ten years ago, before video arraignment really got huge in our county, because that's, we started about fourteen years ago here, um, Superior Court was not doing video arraignment, so that was only during COVID that they started doing video arraignment, District Court's been doing it for years. When Bill's talking about the two courtrooms, they're really not used for District Court, District Court, usually their change of pleas are out of custody, this are really driven superior court, superior court folks that are in custody, change of plea, and those move quickly, and those dockets are quite large, um, for the Superior Court, and when it comes to our transfer, I know you and I have talked about this with security of the courthouse, and I know the judges have brought this up as well, we don't have bailiffs in the courtroom, those change of plea dockets move quickly, um, there's requirements from the state of fingerprinting and um, all those areas that have to take place at that time, it's safer movement for that to happen at the bottom of the jail, just to be transported down, so they're not arraignment as they are built in more change of plea courtrooms.
So I would like more detail on that, so it sounds like a Superior Court change of plea, uh.
Is more than driven.
More than just an arraignment court, and I'd kind of get the date on.
Absolutely.
How many hours a week that would actually be used.
Yes, I can get you that data, for sure.
Good question, Sue.
But I wasn't sure if we had one more page.
We have one more slide, and I want to get to that, because it talks to the.
It's okay, let's get to that, and I have some comments I'd like to make after that.
You bet, um, so this last slide is really talking about the Jail Work Center, uh, so again, part of what we're um, at, tasked to do was look at all of your facilities, um, and as part of this was at the Jail Work Center, um, uh, and the conversations that we, we end up having was doing a new facility uh, out there on site, was the best value to be able to provide to the county, um, looking at fourteen-point-five million dollar project budget, which would be about twelve million dollar bricks and mortar construction budget, uh, this would be a medium-security housing facility, uh, we went through a couple of different programming and kind of planning opportunities there, ultimately with being a medium-security facility would be a double bunk, so uh, two individuals in a cell, which would be roughly about seventy-two uh, beds, uh, approximately twelve thousand six hundred square feet, um, as part of this, uh, because of some need, additional needs at the Jail Work Center, would be planning for expanding of some of the parking to be able to support um, the uh, food service and laundry component there, as well as potential. component there, as well as potential opportunity for reuse of the existing dormitory facility on campus. And so the plan moving forward would be to do design permitting and groundbreaking still this year, by the end of this year in 2024, with construction completion and occupancy by 2025. Again, the real driver for this would be that relief valve, be able to bring seventy-two additional beds online within the next two years, to be able to really help those communities as well as the county be able to manage your jail population. So that was, is a big driver here. Again, this is an aerial image just of the Jail Work Center site. The area in blue is essentially what we would be looking at for putting the seventy-two bed facility, and then the gray box more at the top of the image would be really looking at expanding parking to be able to support additional staff that would be coming here, as well as potentially how the existing dormitory housing facility could be utilized in the future.
I want to add one thing to that real quick, Chair. The, I would say the innovative piece of this is that the cells are already pre-built. So why, how we can bring this online so quickly is the cells are pre-built, and Bill and his team have been looking at ways and companies throughout the United States that we can look at that are basically HVAC, electrical plumbing, it's all pre-built, you come and put them on site and build it, like, really quickly. And that's what we're looking at for this site to give us flexibility. One thing we heard over the years is courts is often too, with District Court, we have folks that are sentenced on a DUI or a DV, and they get put back in the general population in our jail. This is something we could use in the future after the relief valve piece is done to give us that flexibility to have sentenced folks, as well as not eating up our dormitory area, that we could potentially look at transitional housing in the future. So there's ways that we can use this for pre-thinking, for forward-thinking in how we can utilize this building in the future.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate this presentation. I think that the public is keenly interested in the jail and improvements being made, and I know we've struggled over the years. So I think everyone involved knows that this work that is being done is really important. I've been impressed with our consulting team, your experience, and I feel like you've been very responsive to the committee that's working on this, and that is reflective in the work that you're doing here. It's a challenging, it just looks to me like a very challenging site, and I'm impressed with what you've done to pull that together as far as what we're looking at. So it's important for the public to understand this, presentations like this, I think as we were moving forward, continue to do presentations like this so that the public can better understand, because ultimately, it's the public that will need to support this. And I, I guess the, more specifically related to like the mental health component of this, I don't know if public health has really been pulled in or being consulted with, but I think if we're looking at treatment, it'd be good to get them involved early on. And I was really very interested in, and would like to understand more about how design can be supportive of treatment. So that would be, I'd like to understand that better. And I think I don't have really any specific questions at this time. I am grateful for the opportunity to participate in the committee and look forward to continuing in that role.
Okay, Glenn.
So I have, please bear with me, I have quite a few questions here. So I appreciate this. I do have some questions that were submitted by some of my constituents, and I think most of those were touched on pretty well. The one thing I would ask, if you could, just very quickly summarize, as far as mental health inmates and detox inmates, what happens with them now, what the changes, just very simply stated?
Currently, those inmates are grouped together. We use an F-four area, we put most of our acute mentally ill into, it's a more secured space, so we can individualize them. Many of them are not able to associate with other inmates, but sometimes they can. So that classification is an ongoing puzzle piece. Our detox folks, they ebb and flow. Some days it's twelve, some days it's sixty-eight, and sometimes they're down in our booking areas in a general fourteen by sixteen space with ten or twelve cots on the ground, so that our nurse and medical staff and our employees that have eyes on quickly can respond if necessary. So that happens. If we overflow that space, then they assess them individually and see who can go up into general population, but that wouldn't be best case practice, but that's what we have to do now. So I think, does that answer that question for you?
As far as what we're doing now, what would the changes then be?
Well, the change is, Bill described in that transitional housing, is they would have opportunities for flexible housing to be within the visuals or by themselves, but they would be centrally located next to the medical facility and response teams and those kinds of things in that quick response area, but more opportunity to keep them separated by themselves, I'm sorry, collected together in that group versus spread throughout, so.
Great, thank you. So a couple of things, and these are like, I mean, these are just kind of wild ideas that came to my head while sitting here thinking, so take them for what they are worth, but, you know, seventy percent, I think around seventy percent of our budget is Law and Justice, and our budget is how much annually?
For the jail?
No, just our entire budget is, I mean, it's enormous. So I'm just curious, like, how much money we're spending on that? And, you know, I am, by nature, I'm a fiscal conservative, and I want to be very protective of what we spend, but in this particular instance, when seventy percent of our budget is Law and Justice, any single case of recidivism that we can reduce through this process is going to have large savings for our county. And so in this particular instance, I want to make sure that what we build is something that is significantly reducing and actually, in, you know, putting us in a better financial position, because we're getting those people out of our system, back into society in a productive way, and we're saving serious money by doing that. So I guess what I'm saying is, I see this geared completely at remodel, and I think that that is the majority of the reasons, because of expense, and I hope that we would, side by side, still be evaluating that. And part of that is because the contract, the general contractor side of me, the alarm bells are going off like crazy, because this is a logistical nightmare. You know, remodeling a home with a family inside of it is a logistical nightmare, no security is required in that home, you know? So I mean, just some of these things, and I know that you've worked on that, but I just don't want to rule out a new building. And if it's, you know, if we have location restraints, and have we worked with the City of Vancouver to look, could we vacate a road if it would be necessary and smart to do that? So it looks like that has been considered.
What Bill talked about, when we talked in a steering committee about Harney, one of the areas that we talked about, and Chair Mebedi brought this up, the Sallyport's such a choke point, right? There's only two, only different ways we can put that on the current property. So we have looked at that, and I think when Bill showed the maps, there are two areas where the acute mental housing, the orientation, and some of the newer things that we don't currently have in our footprint are newer bills on the side of the existing remodel. So I think to your, to your question, Counselor Young, we have looked at that, looking at how do we use what we have, how can we fix what we have, but also looking at how we can add what we need to become evidence-based, and quite frankly, to the standard that we want of care. And then to Chair Mebedi's point, the leader of looking at how we connect people with programs, how we connect to do mental health care in our facility, we are looking at those, and that's a driving force when we're looking at the programming part of this. So we have, we are looking at that.
Yeah. Glenn, the largest portion of this belongs to the court and its probation services, its jail alternatives, and we've had those briefings. We really are utilizing best practices in this county that the nation has to reduce recidivism. But the jail does have a huge role, as you said. Detox, mental health, and then that handoff into the community, especially with homeless.
Yes.
Those are things we really do hope to improve.
Right. And as Dave said, that when, in our footprint, we can't have that handoff, it's not as easy to do that handoff. We have tons of people, like providers, that want to come into our facility to help, and I think that speaks to our community. We have people standing at the door, ready to get involved in how they can help with, with getting housing, getting this, getting services, getting sleeping bags, whatever we can do to help folks. And our space limits that, and that's what we're looking at, those type of things, as Bill had on the programs, is one of the very last slides, that programming is driving how we do the space. It's not the beds that are driving. We want to look at how we're doing this versus why, and the why. So that's, I just want to give you that as well.
Yeah, and so just a little more along the lines, I literally this last week went into a basement of a friend of mine that he was considering finishing. And after the conversation was over, I told him, unless there's something specific about this very location that you absolutely have to stay here for, it does not make sense to go this route, you know? Find an existing house or new, build a new house that suits your needs, because the expense, because of the parameters of this specific basement, which I've finished many basements in my career, and they work out a lot of times, but this one didn't because of all those restrictions and stuff. So I just want to make sure that we don't build something or, you know, remodel, build, and we could have spent ten or twenty percent more and got so much more effectiveness out of that. So I just want to make sure that that's not ruled out, if that's the way that we should go. I don't know, has it been ruled out at this point?
So I want to add something before Bill chimes in. We've looked at that over the years of the jail placement, and I just want to make sure that, because we explored that, the jail work center is down a ways, and the transport is really difficult if we're transporting people back and forth. So we're looking at from the jail work center being used as we're actually placing folks out there, we're not transporting folks to and from jail per se on any given basis. The jail proximity to the courthouse, to lawyers, to all the programming that goes on downtown, that's why we're looking at it from that perspective. So if you're looking at maybe, I'm just going to say this, if you're looking at building way out, because it would be cheaper, I think you then lose the staff time to transport, we have to build a holding area, the courts are not going to move, so there's all those other added cost components that come in that we have looked at in the past. So I just wanted to add that in there, too. I'm sorry, Bill, I knew you were going to add something.
No problem. We actually do have a consultant, our team, and an owner advisor that has thirty years of experience of constructing the correctional facilities throughout the Western United States. We did meet with them last week, they are in the process of doing constructability review of just, as you said, you know, with regard to some of these plans, what's the modification of the existing structure. Again, that's the benefit that we actually do have of a jail facility, they're very robust, they're built with very durable materials, so they do have much longer than a thirty to fifty-year lifespan. But, that being said, we want to make sure that we still are doing the best thing possible. From that constructability review, we are looking at phasing as well, so, which is really in some of these plans of being able to bring on orientation housing and some of these other acute mental health housing, these specialized housing models, that allows that capacity, so we can shift folks out of the building and allows us to go back into the existing building and do modifications as needed, based off of really how we're repurposing those spaces. But in the bigger picture, a lot of that existing housing, we are going to reutilize, continue to utilize, just try to improve it in one way or another. And we can brief you some more in the future about what some of those strategies would be, which allows us to be very cost-effective.
Great, thank you. And then, one more question, and this, I mean, it sounds to me like we're utilizing pretty much all the parking that's currently available, because I, I mean, we have an empty parking structure virtually right now, so we, I'm assuming that that's all been incorporated?
So the parking on the one side is jury, and that is a conversation that we'll need to have with the courts as well, and we've started that dialogue about where we potentially have that. We're one of the very, very last, I would say, because we're in an urban area, urban areas that offer jury parking, usually it's paid for, like if you park in a parking spot. So we're on those initial dialogues. The other side is all of our correction staff that parks in that area, and some probation staff for the court. So we're in the early dialogues of how we can, if we go that route, how we can move parking around to be able to accommodate.
I mean, if we can move something into the parking structure and we have the space, then we can use that land.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great. And the last thing I was going to ask was, I was kind of curious about how, we talked about this a couple times, so services, like, you know, the handoffs, are we currently handing off to organizations that, you know, that have contracts with the county in one way or another, and they are left to do this? Or is it a direct contract for jail people being released in specific that way?
There's a couple different ways that we have providers that come into our facility. Oftentimes, it's through courts, sometimes it's through other community providers of that, they have their own customers and clients, and so they're, they come in all different ways, courts, public, private, and so it's that handoff that we're trying to accommodate. Sometimes inmates go out, I'm sorry, folks get released out the back door, some's north door, some's however, in the middle of the night, and those are some of the things that we're trying to clean up right now. But that handoff, we try real hard to make it a warm handoff, but sometimes it's cold. And so those are always some practices, looking for best practices on how those happen, and how we get notified through the courts that somebody's getting a release today, because oftentimes it's today. And some of those things haven't been worked out completely with our external providers, so.
Great. I think that this is probably just as important as how we build the jail, because we can do everything perfect in the jail, and if we have that handoff and there's any failure in that, we've accomplished nothing. So, all right, thank you for bearing with me through all those questions, I appreciate the update and look forward to what comes up with.
Just for info for the council and the public is, one of the things that we often focus on is the body, we have the human being, and we are focusing on some of those gaps that currently happen. So when we realize there's a gap in services or how a person gets out of our facility, we're not just holding that to ourselves, we're reaching out to the DCRs and the courts, and whether that's documentation issues or response issues, we're being more vocal today because, again, we're trying to solve issues that might be ten or twenty years old, that what's going on in 2024. So I just wanted to let you know, that is an ongoing project, and we're getting some, actually, some steam going with that, so.
Michelle, Karen, do you have any questions out there?
Sure, I have a few questions.
Please.
As far as the constructability review, I'm assuming, are these bullet points where it says next steps, are these the performance milestones for this design contract?
These are, these are components of our current pre-design phase scope work, so we indicated we would do a constructability review to make sure whatever solution we're presenting and planning for, that the phasing as well as constructability is viable. We will, as well as as part of the cost analysis, which is the bottom bullet point here, so constructability review is ongoing right now. We actually had engineering discussions and tours that occurred earlier, or at the end of last week, and so the engineering consultants are formulating additional kind of questions, and will be providing additional documentation on, especially the existing building, on what needs to possibly get replaced in the short term, and how other systems could be added on to the existing infrastructure that's there. At tomorrow's meeting, we'll be presenting on trauma-informed design, and really how the facility can actually benefit folks that are coming into your facility that have experienced trauma, which again, comes back to that reducing recidivism. We are, and have been in the process of doing land use analysis and building codes, and initially building code analysis, will continue to reach out in the very, very near future, in the coming weeks, with the City of Vancouver, who will be acting as the authority. the City of Vancouver, who will be acting as the authority having jurisdiction from planning as well as code, to make sure our assumptions are all supported and correct. And then, again, we'll continue to do additional site and conceptual refinement. At tomorrow's meeting, we'll also start the sustainability discussions with regard to systems, which will be informed by our engineers, as well as passive solutions to make sure the building is as efficient as possible. Again, jail facilities are huge consumers of water and power, so what can we do from a strategy standpoint and planning and establishing the basis for systems that will be as efficient as possible? So is that, you know, are we heat recovery systems? Are we doing passive daylight, so reducing lighting needs? Are we doing, what are we doing for ventilation? All those type of things can have a huge benefit with regard to lowering the county's utility bill or being very cost-effective in planning for how those utility costs can be planned for in the future with the new facility. So all of that is really what we're going to be doing over the coming four to six weeks, or have already started to do, yes.
And then I'm, and what phase will, so I'm assuming this, Counselor Young sort of alluded to this when he was asking about where the inmates will be during the remodel or construction phase. I'm assuming the swing space will be within the jail. What phase of these next steps will that be discussed?
That kind of phasing plan will be part of this initial phase. So when we wrap up the pre-designed document, which will be by, in March, we will have documentation about really what that strategy would be, you know, where would individuals go, looking at really an overall planning schedule for construction, and really where folks would be moving during the phases of that construction. Because, as indicated, cost analysis is going to be, is a major part of this, and really knowing the length of construction, knowing the number of phases, the complexity of construction, whether it's new or renovation, is all going to have a factor with regard to overall cost. So we have to really understand constructability, total duration, and what are those incremental steps to be able to make this work, to really understand cost. So all that has to be thought out and planned for us to really have a robust and accurate cost analysis as part of this. And this is going to be looking at costs both from a, just the bricks and mortar, hard costs, so your construction costs, but also applying in those soft costs, so that the fixtures, furniture, and equipment, also looking at permits and fees and all those other kind of costs that kind of build in. So you're looking at this holistically, what is the overall budget that the county needs to plan for, for implementing the solution.
And one, just one last question, just to clarify to the public. As part of this design contract, is this going to be the remodel cost versus constructing a new jail altogether, or is this just going to be focused on remodeling the existing jail structure?
So we did have some very good discussions at our last steering committee a couple of weeks ago with regard to that. As we indicated, the immediate needs are much larger than your existing facilities. And so we talked about, you know, are we value engineering? Are we reverse engineering to be able to accommodate your existing infrastructure? And the direction that we have from the steering committee is to really approach this holistically. So the solutions will be both a renovation as well as new construction to be able to meet your current needs.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. That's all for me, Chair.
Chair Mevji, this is Kathleen. Can I clarify?
Yeah, and I don't see Karen Bowerman, I'm assuming she's still on. So go ahead, we'll hear from the manager, and then if Karen Bowerman has any questions, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So just to clarify Counselor Young's budget question, the 70% that is tied to law and justice is our general fund, not the entire county budget. And the general fund budget is around $200 million a year, so just to provide some of that clarification. And I did also just want to share, you know, as council saw before we, as we started getting into this, there is a lot of stakeholder groups that are involved with this process with specific areas of expertise, and their recommendations and information is actually shared with the steering committee. The steering committee takes all of that feedback, plus the council's feedback on what the county is looking for, what services we're looking for for a jail. And so I guess I would recommend, because they're really the decision-makers on leading this effort, we do have Counselor Belkot and Counselor Marshall as our council representatives on the steering committee, and it might be beneficial, you know, instead of having like these formal presentations, but at least having maybe a weekly or every other week kind of update on what's being discussed at the steering committee, just so that we don't get too far down the road with the rest of the council not hearing that. And I think that would be a good opportunity during council reports to kind of share feedback that they've gotten and direction that they're giving with regards to the project. So that's all I would like to share.
Thank you. Counselor Bowerman, or did you have any questions?
Not a question.
Otherwise, I think, yeah, please.
Not a question per se, but just to comment, what, I think that this discussion today was very well done. It was very thorough, and thank you for all of the thought that went into it. It was, it was really incredible. I would say, though, that it was kind of over the top in terms of the quantity of information that it was given for the, the public, even the media, to be able to absorb. And I think that there has been, there had been some good discussion earlier on about the role of the many feedback mechanisms that would go to the steering committee, but where are they? What, what happened and what is happening with the feedback that they are giving? I think that might be a good place to kind of hone in on some of the more narrow specifics to make it more doable for the public and the media to follow the details of what is taking place on a little bit smaller scale than the wonderful overview that we had today. And I don't mean to shortchange in any way the work that was done for today. It was fabulous and super informative. But I do think that the other would be taking advantage of a system that was put in place that it doesn't appear that we're utilizing at this point to the extent that would be valuable for the public.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bowerman. And that's just one of Sue's points as well, and I was going to make this comment on our next step. Because I was, I was hoping for a little bit more nuts and bolts, and not the overarching presentation we had. I think at some point, number one, for the public, law and justice has been dealing with a lot of these issues over the last year-plus, and there's a lot of good detail and discussion there, if you want to weigh in and listen. Once we get to the point where we have really focused on what are we doing now? What are we doing next? And here's how it looks, you know, actual architectural renderings of what, you know, not just an example from somewhere else that may give a false expectation of what ours will look like. You know, once we get to the point where we're, we have more to present to the public, I really recommend that we have something like an open house or several open houses where you have placards with, with actual architectural drawings of what we're proposing here, and then a specific timeline of what's now, what's next, what's in the future. So the public has, and during that open house, has some mechanism for questions and answers and dialogue. I don't think we're ready for that yet, but.
We're still, so I just want to mention, as Kathleen touched on this, we're in the pre-design phase, so that's why we wanted to get this large overview, as Chair Bower, Chair Bowerman, sorry, muscle memory. Counselor Bowerman has said the steering committee plays a critical role in how we, you know, there's finance on that, all the jail leadership, two council members, that is a critical piece, that we're taking all that information flow from the stakeholders to the steering committee, and that steering committee then reports to council. So I think that we need to utilize that. We've done a lot in two months, you see that, what's done here in Bill's presentation. But then that design phase, so we'll be coming back, as it says in the bullet point, to shore up that design portion of our contract with KMB, and that design portion will go into all those pieces that you're talking about, Chair Mevji, of actual design, what we can look at. One of the bullet points was community engagement, that was really important to the steering committee, how do we engage the community? The open house piece, I think, is well noted on what we will be doing in that design phase, which is coming next.
So thanks for that. And just one other comment, especially with our policy advisor here, and our legislative session now having started, you know, from time to time, we've talked about it, we've brought it up, about legislative priorities. Last legislative session, they did a lot of discussion about jails and regional jails, county jails, and some county share jails. And the only proposal I've seen, because nothing happened last year really as a result of that discussion, and all's I've heard this year is that, well, we're looking at creating a new administrative body to create standards for jails. That's not what we need. What we need is funding for this kind of capital project, and we can partner with the state, because they're getting decimated with these restorative justice fines by the federal government. You know, we have a facility, we can make it where we can have restorative justice there, and the state, not restorative justice, restorative services, so they can participate in the criminal justice system. The state should participate in the capital funding of these local facilities, whether it's here, because we're doing it now, and other counties are as well, and most are struggling for the resources to make it happen. I don't know, are we going to need a bond at some point, once we get better cost estimates? We might. But the state could really help right now, and that should be the discussion at the legislature, not on putting other burdens on making sure that we're meeting standards. So anyway, I'm hoping that we can carry that message forward as the legislature fast and furiously moves through this session, and we look forward to see the cost analysis. And I'm hoping, as long as we bring the public along and they agree, they'll vote for any bonds we may need, hopefully. Last comments or questions by the presenters, council? Okay, thank you so much, that was a great overview, and we look forward to more, and tune into Law and Justice tomorrow.
Thank you.
Are we ready for the next presentation?